If we're all set, we got five.
Okay, and we are recording.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December meeting of the Laconia Zoning Board of Adjustment. With that, I would like to remind everybody to put your cellphones on silent so that it doesn't interrupt the meeting and that in the audience, please be respectful of each other as they give their presentations and stuff. All questions are come to the board and not to each other. We don't cross banner. We don't have sidebars. We don't do that. All the questions and all the conversation is done because this is a public meeting and we will and have to conduct it as such. Okay? So with that, please call the roll.
Steve Bogart.
Here.
Michael Foot.
Here.
Roland Nagu.
Here.
Gail Ober.
Here.
Marcia Hayward.
Here.
And Michael Lebecki is absent with notification and Jane, I have not heard from her.
So Marcia, are you a voting member yet?
You just, you can see her. Yeah, she's an alternate.
As an alternate, you'll be throughout the night, please? Okay, the roll call records. Secretary, everybody get a chance to review the draft minutes? Any changes, additions, modifications? Yes?
I believe that on, that Frank Bean should be referred to as Craig Bean.
What page and where at?
I am on page of the minutes.
Fourth page.
Fourth page. Thank you.
I believe you're right, Marcia.
I think it's Craig.
It is. It was Craig.
It was Craig.
It was Craig.
Not Frank, but Craig?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other modifications?
No, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented with the change to them made by, made by Marcia.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor? Very good, very good. Motion passes. All right. Next is the did the minutes, is extensions. Application two zero one nine dash zero zero two one, extension six six fourteen Endicott Street, Solar Garden Extension Request. Applicant here, please come forward, introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we can help you.
Good evening. My name is Clark Fenner with New England Solar Garden. I'm here to request an extension of the zoning board approval that was granted back in June of 2019. We have finally, after many years of trying to get a solar ordinance passed in the state of New Hampshire that will allow greater than a one megawatt project. Trying to get that passed. The governor finally signed that into law this late last summer, this past summer. And so now the project is actually viable. We have a financial partner, GSSG Solar, who we've done in the past year, we've done seven projects with them in the state of New Hampshire. These are all one megawatt projects. We've got three more in Nashua, Conway, and Loudon that are under construction right now. And we'd like to get this project into construction early this summer, this coming summer. Therefore, that's why we need the extension of the, of the zoning board approval. There's only one thing which could delay this again, and that is our friends at Eversource. All of our permits, all of our approvals with Eversource throughout the state, et cetera, are all in place. However, now Eversource is changing their mind about where they would like us to interconnect to the grid. All of our approvals up to this point have been in the, if you're familiar with the site up there, there's a power line right-of-way that runs right through it. They had approved our interconnection in that spot. All budgets were done. Everything was approved using that interconnection. And now that we're finally ready to move, they say, you know, we'd really love you to interconnect down on Endicott Street. Well, that changes a few things and, and we are, we requested Scott Meyer's assistance in, in speaking with Eversource to try to get them to waive this change in policy. It is not an official policy. It's just something that they have decided that they want to change. We understand the reasons why, however, because of the excess of those the particular right-of-way wires is quite good from Sterling Drive because we'll be improving the road to get up to it. We believe that we have standing to go ahead with the town's help, with the city's help, to request that they waive that. But we're also making plans on the side to interconnect down on Endicott Street also. And that's just a matter of changing some permits. We're just not sure how long that might take. But other than that, project is all set and ready to go, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have a quick, couple of quick questions.
Sure.
I'm old and I forget things. How big a megawatt?
Um, right now, we're looking, it's about 2.9 megawatts.
Okay.
I was gonna ask the same question.
Oh, okay. And I, I'm sorry. I, I mean.
That's, that's AC. By the way, that's AC. That's, that's what the city gets paid on.
Okay, okay. And I, I, I also just want to say, you know, as a question, I really hope you don't have to appeal this to the PUC because...
That's not our, yeah, we don't want to either. I'm believing. The only thing that would do that would be if, if we truly had to force the issue about the, the right-of-way interconnection.
Okay, and that brings me to my next question. And I don't know if you can answer this and if our city planner can, has an answer that you don't have. Does that change if you're forced to make this change to Endicott Street, as you may or may not, really, we don't know right now, do you have to come back in front of this board for more, any right-of-way or anything like that?
No, we shouldn't. And here's the reason why. Eversource already has a right-of-way coming in from, from Endicott Street. When they closed the landfill, they took out the wetland crossing that was there. There was, there was a culvert there that was taken out. We don't have any plans on using that for access anyway. What we, all we would do is we would span that with the wires. Okay? Our response back to Eversource was that if we do need to do that, you've got to give us the space on the road to put four poles. And I said, you give us the space on the road to put four poles, we can, we can cross over there and we can bring our wires in there. Their point was, that's fine, because they want to own what's on there, on the roadside of the river and the crossing, and we own what's on the land side. They've already got wetlands permits. They've already got poles there that we can use. And so that's, it can be done. We're just trying to go with the permits we already have.
No, I don't blame you. Gene, do you, did you, Mr. Chair, do you have anything you need to add or subtract to what he said? Or is that your understanding of what we're looking at?
No, that's my understanding from a, from a planning standpoint. If they have to change the connection point, they would reflect that in there as built.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
So if they were, if you had to use the Endicott Street one, being as there's already a a access through the property for power lines, but if you had to use the Endicott Street, how much infrastructure needs to be built on Endicott Street to make the connection? Is there a house? Is there a?
It's just four poles.
Just four poles.
Just four poles.
We can tax those poles, right?
Well, I, I suppose.
No, that was just an old lawsuit that you're probably aware of. It's kind of municipalities tax, tax utility poles, and it's a nominal amount of money, but in taking in, Eversource and some city battled it out and Eversource lost and they've...
Sure.
Yeah.
No, our, what, what, the way it breaks down is that the, the transformers and what are called re-closers, which are what, allow it to be isolated from the rest of the grid. Those would be on the, the street side. On the, on our side, they're medium voltage lines that again, don't carry a whole lot of power. It's, and there's no heavy equipment there. Then we have another transformer that's up further at the site itself.
Okay. I, I'm, Mr. Chair, I, I, I'm all set. It's all starting to come back.
All right. Anybody else have any questions at this time? Yes, or Mike? Oh, I saw the hand.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. We approve the extension. The request for an extension, Z oh two zero one nine dash zero zero two one for six one four Endicott Street East Solar Garden Extension. I guess we don't, I don't have a land map document, but is that enough that you need, Karen?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
What is the date on that extension?
June 22.
That's a six months. Okay.
Yep.
And do you plan on being started by June 22?
If, as long as Eversource doesn't delay us, absolutely.
So we got a motion.
It's already been ordered. It's all ready to go.
We got a motion?
Second.
Have a motion. Do we got a second?
Yes.
Mike is second.
Mike seconds.
You got a motion and a second.
Okay. Any discussion of the motion? There being none? All those in favor of the motion?
I am.
Okay, motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Appreciate your time.
He has a tough time right now.
Okay. The next application is his public hearing. Consideration and vote notes. The purpose of this agenda section is for the board to have a presentation from the applicant and open a public hearing for the public to provide input. The board may also deliberate the application, decide and conduct a final vote at this time. That applicant, first application is two zero two one dash zero zero five nine variants, five two two Layton Ave. North. App can is requesting a variance from Article Four, Section two thirty-five nineteen. Shoreland Protection to allow the redevelopment of a structure located in the Shoreland Protection Overlay District and within the fifty-foot water front buffer. App can here, please come forward, introduce yourself for the record and please tell us how we can help you.
I'm Frank Betchart. I'm the owner of five twenty-two Layton Avenue North. The application is for relief from primarily the forty-foot requirement setback from the front line on the lot. The proposed project would be to demolish the current residence and garage. The residence being only seven hundred square feet approximately and the garage being four hundred square feet. And we've worked to actually pull the proposed structure back from the waterfront further to make it more nearly conforming. But in doing so, we encroach on the setback that's required from the front line which would give us space to build. The lot itself is a hundred feet deep from the lakefront to the front line. So if we were to conform completely to the fifty-foot setback from the lakefront and the forty-foot setback from the front line, we would have a ten-foot window to build anything. So what we are proposing is the, the best way we could juggle to put a little larger residence, which is still relatively modest, a little over two thousand square feet. And we've rotated it to look down the lake a little bit more and towards Lad Mountain. And most of the structure that impinges on the fifty-foot setback actually is within the footprint of the current dwelling and the concrete patio. That's the overview. I'd be happy to address any specific questions and...
I just have one question, Mr. Chair, and it's kind of a point of order. Your request that you submitted to us is for relief from the fifty-foot waterfront buffer. Now, you want relief from the front setback?
That's correct.
So this, that we're looking at, that we read your narrative needs an amendment?
That may be the case. The...
I mean, before, I just, yeah, before we go any further, I want to make sure that our, our, our technical ducks are in a row before...
I recognize that when the...
I want to make sure we're approving the correct thing that you need or not approving.
I recognize that when the letter came out announcing the meeting tonight. Mr. Bailey, who prepared the application, couldn't be here tonight because he's been diagnosed with COVID, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah.
I'm glad he's not here. Sadly.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
So a lot of moving parts on this plan.
I, I think there are, and I want to make sure that we have all our parts
Yeah.
that in a row before we start approving something that's not going to stand mustard down the road.
So the applicant's corrected, you know, you essentially get a ten-foot area in the middle of the lot that
Is built.
that's free and clear and ready to go. Our position, staff's position, is that the proposed house is, is more conforming in the front setback than the current situation with the, with the garage and the house. So
Should he?
we allow that. But it's good to cover it all at this time so that everyone's...
Should we be also adding an additional variance request for relief from a different chapter other than just nineteen? Should there be two variance requests in one application? I mean, we can do that.
Yeah, you can't. So maybe. If, if we're just talking about the house, then I would say no, because the, the proposed house is on the front setback is more conforming than everything that's going on right now. However, my question to the applicant is also looking at this time for the basically the allowance of the proposed garage, great room, and, and sunrooms, or are we just looking for the house at this point in time?
It's the entire footprint that's outlined on the, on the...
Including the proposed?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I have more detailed plans of the from the preliminary architect's drawing that got us to arrive at that footprint. If you would like to review those. I only have one copy with me, but we could set that up, I'm sure.
So... But it looks like we have a deck going into the fifty-foot setback.
And we also have...
Sunroom.
But, but the, the proposed sunroom is in the present footprint. So it's, it's not any more non-conforming. Proposed deck is different.
I'm trying to make sure the application is complete.
So the proposed...
Because it's, if it's incomplete, your variance is going to be null and void. And, and that's that's where I'm going with this. It's a technical question. It's really not a project.
The proposed sunroom is mostly in the existing footprint. It's the proposed garage that I think is the, is going to be the issue. And to be on the safe side, I, I, I would recommend, I mean, I, I think you should continue with the hearing and get as many questions out of the way as you can, but I would recommend you table and we, and we, we re-advertise, you know, for the next meeting because, just to cover the legal aspect.
Because seventy-five percent, it looks like at least seventy-five percent of the great room is going to be in that front setback also.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, I, like I said, I, this is, we're not, we're not really even talking about your plan except for we're trying to make sure that we have everything procedurally.
I don't have any issues with it because of the way the lot is and everything, there's not a lot you can do.
Oh, I understand that.
Do. So, but it's, it's a matter of just to make sure that it's been advertised correctly and, and posted and all, and et cetera. Yep.
Okay, well, I'm going to defer now to the chair. I mean, do we want to hear this partially now and then vote on it later?
We can go ahead and, and listen to and get some questions. If someone else has questions, I'd give them a chance to the next meeting because we're going to continue it anyway. And that way, if there's any questions that he needs to get some research on, then he'll have a month to do that. What do you think?
I, like I said, I know this is hyper-technical, but this is a hyper-technical business.
I mean, because we're not going to act on it tonight anyway, so, other than maybe do some discovery and we're going to table it and continue it to the next meeting so that it can, can get advertised again with the front setback and what its chapter and verse that it belongs to.
I'd like to hear what other people on the board have to say, Mr. Chair.
Please. And but?
I see what it is. The attached garage looks like it's impacting on the front side there. That looks like a fairly significant building also. The rest of it seems fairly reasonable. And I'm not against it, but I can understand more discussion.
Yep. Anybody else have anything that might stick out before we vote to continue it?
What is, Mr. Chair, what is the, what is the setback on the garage? I'm, I'm looking at the diagram and I'm just curious what, what it...
It's a forty-foot setback.
And that garage is...
And it's coming out at, I think if I'm looking at the dimension right, twenty-four feet.
Okay, I see it.
I, I, I would like to clarify that the, the front line is not actually border Layton Avenue. My front line abuts the property of the Laconia Christian School. And I have an easement of some twenty feet across their property. So the cul-de-sac at the end of Layton Avenue North is technically an easement, I think, to the city from the Christian school. And so if you look at the actual deeded portion of Layton Avenue North and then the outline of the asphalt, the cul-de-sac, we would be well over forty feet back from that. But that includes that buffer that would be provided by the Christian school property that just happens to be between my property line and the road.
I don't think you can use their property as a part of your setback.
I, I understand. That's why we need a variance.
Right.
But I was trying to clarify the, the, the spirit of the ordinance is that people aren't building too close to the street.
Right.
And in spite of the fact that we would be getting a variance, we would still be within the spirit of the ordinance, I think.
Mr. Chair, I, I, in light of what he just said, I'd like to see a narrative before we go further that actually reflects everything this, that the, the zoning board needs to do. If it needs a front setback before we go further. I do hate to waste your time, but I, I'm, I'm, if you could put this to a vote, I'm just more comfortable with a complete application
Absolutely.
than I am with an incomplete application that we have to come back to, that, that something may change from...
That's what we're going for, is to have a complete application so that we'll have it for the next meeting. We're going to continue the application. There was just, the question was, so that he could take his month to figure this out, is there any sticking question that they needed to do research on? Based on what we said, they've got some homework they already have to do. That's all we were trying to accomplish before we continue it and then come up with that question we could ask tonight and have another month delay on while they do it. You know what I'm saying?
I do know what you're saying.
We still want all the paperwork. We want the complete application. I want to see the drawings like what you've said myself, because if we're looking at the bigger picture and stuff, trying to accommodate this, then I would like to see that myself, so.
And then in that, in light of that, again, I recommend that you bring this to a vote. I would recommend that we hold on asking the application. Any questions tonight? We're seated an alternate. We may have a different composition of the board next month that would have a different set of questions. That does happen on occasion.
Very well. Could I like to bring this to a question?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we delay this for the reasons that is...
We tabled this action.
Yeah, that we table, I make a motion that we table the action.
We have a second. All those in favor of tabling? You had a question?
I did.
Before we vote? Yes.
At the end of this road, at the end of this Layton Ave. North, this piece and another piece, is it a shared driveway or is it some sort of bifurcation of access?
There's it's very complex. The cul-de-sac is an easement to the city, and there are three driveways that have easements off of that cul-de-sac, individual driveways, myself being one, Curtis to the south of me being one, and Mulcurran to the north of me being the other. So there's three different driveways that come off of the cul-de-sac.
Right, that is the only question I have. The rest of them are for...
Okay, so we have a motion.
I have a second, just to table and get everything complete before we go forward.
Thank you. So all those in favor of the motion? Okay, it's going to be tabled. There's some work. Please get the staff and y'all configure this out and stuff.
Okay, I'll need the specific ordinance to correct the application, so I'll get that from you tomorrow, I guess. Is there some form to fill out that is the amendment to the application or something?
That's fine.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, next application is two zero two one dash zero zero six zero S E. It's a special exception. Applicant is requesting a special exception from Article Five, Section two thirty-five dash twenty-six. Use permitted by special exception to permit the use as a multifamily. Would the applicant please come forward to introduce yourself for the record?
Mr. Chair, we did get a phone call today from Mr. Kobelski, the applicant. He has requested an email of continuance to the January meeting. He's awaiting the outcome.
He's awaiting the outcome of a appeal to the State of New Hampshire D E S.
Okay. Should we table this, Mr. Chair, or should we just, it has to be tabled?
That's the one thirty-three Layton. Because I already brought it in before we had a chance to.
This was twenty-three summit.
Provide us with that information. So, uh, I'd like to make a motion to table application two zero two one dash zero zero six zero S E, twenty-three summit Ave., uh, till the January meeting.
I second that.
You have a second? All those in favor? Okay, it's tabled to the next meeting.
I was looking forward to seeing them again.
I had a bunch of questions in looking at it, but, uh.
Well, I, I did too.
Two will wait because I can't talk about it now.
One and one.
We just got that phone call this afternoon.
Yeah.
My, my, my one, my one fear now is that we're piling up on our January agenda and we'll end up with twenty items. No?
No, actually, even with these two continued, so far there's only one other application that I am aware of that we are expecting for January. So you're not, even by moving a couple forwards, you're really, so, so far, you have until Thursday as the deadline, but I haven't got five or four days either. Usually by now, I will have heard, so far.
And, and technically, oh, and just as the other thing, because Steve, I'm sorry, you forgot to mention it. I, we should, I mean, we should have, um, Layton Avenue, five twenty-two Layton Avenue come first on our next agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we, we tabled it, you know what I mean, yeah, so. Okay, thanks, Karen. I appreciate that.
Yeah, that will happen naturally.
Next application is application zero zero six one. It's a variance, one three-three Layton Ave.
South.
This time. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article Four, Section two thirty-five nineteen. Shoreland protection is allowed for the demolition and reconstruction of a single-family home with a wraparound deck located within shoreland protection, overlay district, and within the fifty-foot watered setback. Applicant, please come forward, introduce yourself to the record, and tell us how we might help.
All right, first, and to be expeditious, if, all right, if I can borrow your easel? I've got one folded up and it'll probably take me five minutes to figure it out, so.
There's a rental fee on our easel.
You live in the city?
As I was going to say, there's government fees there, so.
If you live in the city, it is part of yours because you paid it for it.
Oh, there you go.
As a taxpayer.
Well, you're not the only one there.
Yeah, we're simple minds.
So my name is David Ekman from Ekman Engineering, and I'm representing Rick and Carolyn Holt. Yeah, I almost stood up before. There's a north and a south Layton tonight. That must be a coincidence. That's, um, kind of in a similar but little different situation. Uh, the property on this one is one point one acres about, fairly good-sized property. There's been an existing home on it since the eighteen eighties, and basically, they, they want to rebuild it, more or less in place. It just doesn't suit their needs anymore, so they, they really would like the opportunity to modernize it a little bit. So this, there is a wraparound porch that they want to put around it. The existing house has some stairs going into kind of a porch area that's under the house. So, what we've done is we've made it less non-conforming. We slid the building back. So it's, it's a little bit, you know, less non-conforming. We're twenty-six feet now to the reference line. And we did set this up also, looking ahead, you know, for N H D S shorelands permitting. So, we also removed some sidewalks and some impervious, and we slid it back. So the impervious area is about the same within the shoreline protection area, that fifty feet. And why I wanted to, you know, just, I think the picture, if we just take a quick look. So I, I have in green here, I have the existing building, so you can see we slid the, the proposed building back. So even if the wraparound porch is farther back than the, than the existing building was, quite a little bit, because the, the green is the existing building.
I've got it. I can see it here. I'm good.
So, when I talk about the impervious, I mean, we slid it back so that the impervious area on the shoreline side of the ref, the fifty-foot setback, the waterfront buffer, it's about the same area. And there's two ways we did that. You know, we pushed it back, but we also removed, if you look at the existing, just pop this up for a second.
Yeah, it's not a big.
But yeah, the same crosshatch, that was all, you know, concrete walkway before, so we're going to get rid of all that. And again, I'm stepping it. Really, that's for D E S shorelands, I believe. I don't know if that's, really. But it's a good technique, you know, we're, we're kind of keeping the same impervious. We're not, you know, that will help with the D E S. So for, you know, so we're here and you have this, um, so Article Four, Section nineteen. Basically rebuilding a house within the shoreline protection area, taking one down and putting it back up. And, um, we did try hard. Like I said, we slid it back, so you can see, we, we backed it up and kind of matched everything, a little less non-conforming as well. That's kind of my little background on it. It's pretty, pretty straightforward. I, you know, I don't know, some towns make me read the application. I don't know that I need to do that here. You know, the existing house was there since the eighteen eighties. We're more or less in the same, same setback, pushed back a little bit. So that's really all I have for a general, general introduction here.
Okay, question if I may. On your existing house on the right, as I'm looking at the document, on the right side next to your gravelled area, you had a green hash marked section?
Yeah, on the existing.
Connecting the two?
Yeah, the, the, the green.
And I don't see that on the other one. Is that disappearing?
Yes, yes. Within the fifty-foot setback it is, yep.
Are you keeping the outhouse? I love that, you know?
I believe the builders here, I could speak to that. That's what I don't know, but.
No, it's, it's actually, I can't tell it's small. I can't tell if you've green hash marked it out. I'm really just teasing you.
No, no, it's, that wasn't hatched out because we didn't really know. Probably they want it for a while until it's constructed.
That's right, I mean.
The two outer buildings that are, that are there will be staying there, rough construction. Uh, the green hash mark you were asking about, that was the deck going to the front door, so that deck part is being removed.
It's on the building, yeah.
Specifically, you want the wraparound porch. Is that an enclosed porch?
I believe it's, he's, he's also the archi, they've got the architectural plans as well from.
Uh, no, that's not going to be goes forward.
Please come forward and enter, sir. Please come forward. I can, I think I can do this.
My name's Nathan Ayala. I'm also with the general contractor, so I should be able to answer most of these questions, hopefully. Yes, the wraparound deck is going to be wide open. Um, the only reason, it is actually extending outwards where it wasn't before is because the house is going to have to be raised up due to us pushing it back and a sl, a pretty, um, deep incline going up the front side, the non-water side of the house. So, to get out of the house over there, we have to put a porch on that side. That's the only reason it's extending out on that side now. And we're starting the beginning, the front of the porch is going to match up exactly where the current house sits. So we won't be encroaching any more forward. We try to push it back as much as we possibly could.
Just out of curiosity, you've got in between your outhouse and the deck, you have a circle with a W. I'm assuming that's a well?
That was probably where the well is, yes. I didn't actually find that.
So close to the outhouse?
Yeah.
Oh, it's. It's going to be my question right afterwards.
And, yeah, and, and then.
Right, and so why do we have an outhouse if we have a well and we have, I'm assuming, a, uh, a, a good, uh, uh, type of septic receiving system here? Why do we have an outhouse?
Uh, the outhouse has just been there since this current house has been built.
Since the eighteen hundreds, that was the, the.
I learned some stuff this week about my access in the city of Laconia, so.
It's just an historic outhouse. I mean, we don't need to send you to the historic community.
No, but it's not like that. But is it there or is it not there?
We have to go to the Heritage Commission in order to.
But is it there or not there? Is it used or is it not used?
Yeah, that's, that's really.
It says the house was built in eighteen eighty, but this house, this current house was built actually in nineteen eighty-one.
That's a good question.
It just hasn't been updated in the paperwork. That's why we had to do the Heritage Committee, because it was like, well, no, this house is actually.
I see what you're saying. Oh, you took.
Well, you have to do the archaeological project in the bottom center of the outhouse.
The outhouse is not currently used, is it?
No, it's not being used currently. It's just an outbuilding.
And the well is used or isn't used?
Well, it is used.
Okay.
And the new septic's in the upper right corner, if you look at the plan.
Thank you.
Okay, and the new septic is, oh, wait, okay.
It's already upgraded.
Oh, 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 the septic has already been upgraded, okay.
Tool shed.
We call it a shed, sorry. Surveyors call it that.
It looks exactly like one of us.
Do we have any other questions of the applicant at, at this time? There being none, I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if, y'all may sit for about thirty seconds. I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Something we got to do. Let the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore I bring it back to the board for further questions.
Mr. Chair, do we, is the porch, can, it, it, because it's not enclosed, that's why I asked that. I mean, and I know we don't consider overhangs. Is that considered part of the structure? Or what we have to do?
You have to, as part of the, uh, variance, yes.
Yes, okay.
Unless it's thirty-five feet above the ground, or what was that rule? Cause that condo?
It's, it's, it's still a structure. We still count the setbacks, but it doesn't count as coverage if it's more than seven feet above the ground. And part of this may be, but part of it won't be, so. But the real reason that you're here tonight is for the creation of the deck around the house.
Yeah, because the, the house is actually conforming.
Yeah, well.
It's mat.
It's quasi-conforming.
Not changing. It's not changing. It's just the deck that we're adding on. And that's the difference between pervious and non-pervious type, is the seven foot.
Yep.
And so when we've done, you're going to, they're going to be twenty-six feet from the water?
It would be twenty-six, which is approximately a foot more than what the current structure is.
Yeah, add that, yeah, that's true. Okay.
And the fir, on the left side of it, on the old drawing was twenty-one point nine, and they took a mark from the same point where the stairs on the new drawing would be twenty-one point nine, so it matched out perfectly.
With the rotation, it, yeah, sorry.
Yep, so nothing other than, and if you looked at the deck itself, the deck itself still falls within the footprint of the old house. So it's mainly the little bit of the left side and a little bit of the right side that's creating the issue. It's better than what was with the current house. Because it gives us some more foot, one more foot, approximately.
Okay, and, um, on this motion, Mr. Chair, should we condition this with shoreline, with, uh, an approval? Do we need to condition this with an approval from the state?
We do.
With the standard state and local permitting?
Standard, standard state and local permitting.
That, that, you're, you're normal.
Yeah, our normal condition on a project like this. So is there any other questions of the applicant?
I have none.
Anybody else?
No.
With that, any closing comments?
Thank you very much.
Y'all may have a seat. We're going to bring it back to the board for discussion.
I, I mean, we.
Looks reasonable.
It, it, it looks what, like, a hundred other plans that we've had in front of us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Rowland.
I think this is in conformity with all of the other constructions that's going on up on Layton Avenue.
Yep. Matches the character of the neighborhood. Okay, no further discussion. Like to entertain a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion that, um, we grant a variance of, from Article Six, Section nineteen of the zoning ordinance for application Z zero, Z O, two zero two one dash zero zero six one for one. One thirty-three Layton Avenue South, tax and map lot thirty-three dash two fifty-three dash seven. Because granting this variance is not going to be contrary to the public interest. Obviously, the public interest in this case is that we are, that we are trying to protect the water, and this is consistent with what's already there. Okay, so that's kind of a wash. Um, the ver, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. That, uh, there is improvement in the spirit of the ordinance is, it goes along with substantial justice. And that is that the benefit to the city is about equal to the benefit. Actually, I think the benefit to the city and the surrounding area is probably improved as opposed to the benefit to the, to the applicant simply because new construction, it's probably going to be more consistent with what our ordinances want. And it's certainly consistent with the neighborhood, which is the, goes to the values of the surrounding properties. They're not going to be diminished. I don't think it's going to have any effect either way on the value of the surrounding properties. And, um, the hardship is at, and it's basically, the initial construction was done in eighteen eighty. And, um, I, I, the hardship generally runs with the property. This property would be undevelopable without this variance. And I, we legally can't make a property undevelopable that has a house on it, and that is reasonable. It's certainly a good plan, and that's my motion. Oh, with the condition that all of the state, local, and federal permits regarding wetlands and anything else are in place before construction begins.
We have a motion?
I just want to point out, as you read that, you said Article Six nineteen, and as I'm reading this, it says Article Four nineteen. Just as a point of that, I want that to be the most correct to come to.
Oh, well, thank you, Mike. It's just why we should be teaching, we should, we should not teach Arabic numbers in, in high school.
So we have a motion? Do we got a second?
Would you, would you second it with the correction?
I will second that, thank you.
We made a modification to it. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Motion passes. Enjoy your new house.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
For your patience and tolerance and indulgence.
I'm sorry, I can't read, um, Roman numerals anymore.
Did y'all want any of these prints?
I'll get mine back.
Yeah, do you need any of these? I mean, or?
You know, if we pick them up, we shouldn't have to make us a copy for the meeting. We should just bring what we picked up with us.
You must live town to town.
I'm trying to save paper here.
I was going to say, especially for the ones.
And clips.
I just handed her back mine.
So. Just before we adjourned.
I do have one thing for you.
Oh, okay.
But go ahead.
As we hold our meetings and stuff, um, there's, uh, points of order and stuff a board of this type has to follow, okay? And one of the things, uh, that we must do as a board is conversations have to be related. conversations have to be related through questions to the applicant, and sidebar discussions and stuff like that should not be happening, okay? And, and stuff like that, they should be in forms of questions through and to the applicant and back, okay? And sidebar discussions and stuff while the applicant is reading their application, or, or other people are talking at the time, should be respected. As I ask people in the audience to respect each other, as board members, we need to also respect each other as we're talking and asking questions and provide ourselves with the ability to let someone finish their conversation. I know sometimes, and I'm as guilty as everybody, that I open my mouth in the midst of trying to get the question in or something like that, so I'm as, as guilty as everybody, but that's why I'm trying to bring this up so that as a new year starts, we can start fresh and, and everything, because we do have things we must accomplish throughout the night, and it keeps the board sane and keeps us on legal ground. Because that's one of the things I try my best to do, is to make sure we stay on legal ground, so that if something pops up later, it cannot be used against us in a court of law.
Understood.
So, with that being said.
Speaking of legal.
Yeah.
So it should not be a surprise to the board that thirty-three Clearwater, the case for short-term rental is, has, they are appealing your decision. They have opted to appeal to the New Hampshire Housing Appeals Board as opposed to Superior Court. I'm not really sure why that was their choice, and
I do.
I don't know what the procedure with that board is, cause it's a fairly new board and we haven't sent anything there yet, but it is in the capable hands of our legal representation, and they have been there, so they know what to do, so just let you know that it has been appealed, and that's where it's been appealed to.
I think I read something about that, it's supposed to be a shorter docket week.
I've read about it too.
Yeah, I think, I think, I, I, I think it was basically to, to move things along through the courts, a lot of the courts are backed up because of COVID, and they were backed up. As someone who spent twenty years covering courts, they were backed up before COVID, now they're just, I mean, it's just such a logjam to get on a docket, that they've done some extra judicial things. What do we do? We have our legal counsel representing us down there.
We put together the, what we call the, the. Thank you, return of record, so basically it's all the agendas, all the minutes, all of the material that was burned and sent in to us, any email that we've had back and forth with the applicant, or any of butter emails or anything like that, so basically all the information, and as you remember with this, this particular case, they were here several times and got continued because of various reasons, they weren't ready to go, or didn't have all the information and attendance, et cetera, et cetera, but there were four or five meetings where there's minutes and agendas, but basically the minutes are, you know, the case was continued, I mean, you know. So it's that whole record of documents, and we just submit that to the, to the legal team, and they pretty it up and.
So it's standard discovery?
Yeah.
Basically, it's, it's standard, and what is their docket turnaround time for that?
I have no idea.
So you, you, this is like kind of uncharted water, waters for all of us.
Yeah, I mean, we just got the appeal last week, we've put together the record, we're gonna send it over to the legal. I, I, I don't know what the timetable is, but you, I mean, you're, you're right about the courts in that this would be months waiting for a court date, and so it may be much quicker to do this, I, and I, but I don't know what the procedure is.
But the worst that can happen is they just remand it back to the zoning board and tell us what we denied it under is, in their viewpoint, not valid?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, cause that's kind of a judge thing, that's usually, I mean.
I don't know if they can make a decision and that's the decision, or whether they decide, it's gonna, I, I don't know what the process is.
To, to this particular thing, there was a recent decision made by a judge over in Carroll County related to Conway, North Conway, but it's actually town of Conway. And it was in regards to an arcane motion within, it was a motion for summary judgment, not gonna get into what all that is, and this is one of the reasons why they, I think, they've tried to expedite some of these things through different boards. And that was her first, one of the first things she wanted in her thing was some legislative guidance on short-term rentals, this is, we're not, I guess to say this, we're not the only community wrestling with this. And we're not the only community in a tourist area wrestling with this. Well, you know, and, and, and courts are wrestling with this, because you know, I, I, I mean, remanding with guidance is what they traditionally did, I don't know, I, I don't know anything about this, it's, it's, it's probably, what, why, let me ask you this, do you know, why isn't this going to the Board of Tax and Land Appeals, or is that just for tax and assessment issues?
I believe that's just for tax and assessment issues.
Okay.
Michael.
Some of what I read about this new setup and this new board here, it's to ferret out any ordinances in a community that could be restrictive to people using their property as they choose to. So it gives them a chance to shine a light on whether we do in actuality have overly restrictive ordinances, or heaven forbid, people just have to follow the ordinance in the way it's structured, so I think, and I don't know anything, because certainly I have zero skills, zero knowledge of this stuff, but it seems to me that it's a spot, and what I've read about these board is to shine a light on overly restrictive ordinances.
Didn't I read recently that there was gonna be a meeting here in Laconia, and I think I missed, missed it. To take a lot of what we do and give it to the planning board?
Uh, well, no, that's probably.
No, we, we, we have a proposal before the city council to revise the short-term lodging ordinance, which would remove the requirement of a special exception. So it would remove the zoning board, it would, it would, it would send it to, it would make it an administrative approval, it would be staff approval. We'd follow basically the same thing that we're doing now, in terms of our inspections and, and all that stuff, it just would not come to the zoning board. Now, if someone were to appeal a decision, whether it's a butter who wants to appeal the decision to approve, or whether it's the applicant who wants to appeal a decision to deny, that would come to the zoning board, because it's part of our zoning ordinance, so any appeal would come to the zoning board. But the actual application as opposed to coming to the board for a special exception, they would not have to do that step any, any longer, but has not passed yet.
Okay, and, and there will be presumably, like, we have also, just in case anyone hasn't paid attention, we, I sit on the master plan steering committee. And that committee has also recommended that we remove the zoning board from the process of building ADUs, and also make that, if they all, if they conform in every way, in terms of they don't need to set any kind of variances on land or anything like that. And that's basically to expedite some of the requests, and hopefully to alleviate some of our housing shortage issues. The city council has asked to review the administrative procedures before they approve it. This has already been through the planning board, there have been public hearings on it. I imagine with the short-term rentals, they're gonna ask for the same thing, is they're gonna wanna receive, usually what happens when a law is passed, is the law is passed, and the, especially in a city, and the administration has rule-making authority, okay? And that is kind of delegated by right to administrators, okay? And in this case, they've asked to see the rules as part and parcel of the legislation that they want to review. I am expecting, and probably Dean is too, that the same procedure is gonna be followed with any amendments to the short-term zoning.
Well, the most restrictive element of the short-term rules that we have now is the five-year plan, the five-year rule, and that was passed by the city council.
Yep, yeah, and I don't know what they're gonna.
Well, actually, the most restrictive part of that law, if you wanna talk about restrictions, is we don't allow them in residential areas. And this is what we ran into with thirty-three Clearwater, and this is actually where the rubber meets the road, is we do not allow these in residential areas, we have carved out exceptions, and those exceptions have been the subject of a lot, I would say most of our, our conversations here, is the five, it's the five-year grandfather-in-clothes and stuff like that, what is unclear in the.
And the effects it have on the neighborhood.
Well, and, and that.
That is the last step that the citizenry have in voicing their opinion on whether they want their neighborhood to have a weekend hotel next door to their house.
Clearwater would have passed if they.
The ability to have a public speaking about whether they want to have brothel, or whatever you wanna call them, next door to their house.
And Steve, this is why they wanted you recused from thirty-three Clearwater.
But the thing is, Clearwater was someone has.
But, but I'm just saying, and you're fine with just saying that, I'm just saying that, you know, the fair and unbiased board, is, you know.
I'm fair and unbiased, but the, the neighborhoods have to have the opportunity to have their part heard just as much as the applicant, because as we say, fair use of property of an applicant, but when it infringes on other people's properties and their rights to enjoy their property, then that is where the board comes in to find out and allow their voice to be heard. Now, whether that means I need to be recused because I believe in all landowners' rights, then so be it. But I don't think so, it's just every property owner, every taxpayer has the right to speak, especially when it's gonna have an adverse effect, or a positive effect. They can support it, or they cannot support it, but they have that God-given right to do that. As a taxpayer, as a property owner, to give the input, and when that's gone, then so is their right and then their neighborhood's.
Thirty-three Clamwa, uh, Clearwater.
I'm not talking about thirty-three Claremont.
This is just in general.
Because that's going to court, and that subject's done and done, we can't talk about it in a public meeting. So, I'm talking in general, myself. Yes.
In general, if you have residents speak against a, a place becoming a short-term rental, and they're not on the street, and they're not a butters, they still have the right to speak against it?
They have the right to speak, but the weight of their discussion is basically what you take or not take as the evidence is being presented. They might be able to provide you evidence as expert witness. Okay, and that's up to the individual person on the board to take and determine the weight of that person speaking, okay? Especially if they're on the outside of the directly affected area.
Right, it's just that that was, can be used by that, cause I can't, just shut up, Marcia, because we can't talk about that place, so.
We can, we just have to do it in public, it's gone to court, there's nothing we can say here.
No, but I was just curious, because of everything that transpired and some of their argument that was presented, I was just curious if.
This is still a public meeting.
Yeah, and it's, and this is a public meeting.
We didn't close the meeting, so we're still on the record.
And then, that's why.
I'm being quiet.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I, I, I think Mister Chair, what I'd like to ask is, I'm gonna guess, you firm this or not, this came at your recommendation. The record, the, the proposal to the city council to change, to eliminate the zoning board from the short-term rental ordinance.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
Can you explain to us why?
I mean, I presented it to the master plan steering committee, and, and I'll tell you, so two things. We're talking short-term rental, right?
Uh, yeah, we're not talking the ADUs.
Okay, so the short-term rental, so there's, there's a couple of things. The first one is, if you go on to Airbnb or VRBO and type in Laconia, between the two list, between the two listings, there's, there's probably about three hundred unique properties, some have more than the others, that are doing some form of short-term rental. We currently have eighty properties with a permit, which means there's two hundred and twenty properties approximately that are doing this, that we nobody's complained about it to us about, so we don't really know about it. And we don't have a good mechanism at the time to ferret these things out. We are looking at a couple of outside vendor services that might be able to do that for us, but we haven't decided on one yet. So that's, that's part of it, so it's going on, it's happening throughout the entire city, not just the resort area, although probably half of them are in the re, in the resort area, but it's going on throughout, I mean, it's on Guilford Avenue, it's on Pine Street, it's on Gale Avenue, it's on, I mean, you know, it's everywhere.
It's drug use, and there's still laws against that.
Sure, that's one reason, the second reason is, since we enacted the ordinance almost two years ago, a couple of, a couple of things have occurred that, that we're aware of, the first one is the platforms themselves have made a concerted effort to crack down on the so-called party house. They, they, they realize from a, from a business model standpoint that that's bad PR for them, that that's bad for their long-term business, because it, it makes people angry, and it makes people want to regulate it so that it, it can't occur. So they have, you know, you, you can't, unlike two years ago when Franklin Street was advertising their property as the ideal location for your bridal party weekend, what could go wrong with that?
Back to the brothel.
Yeah, or the brothel, they, you know, they don't allow that anymore, they, I don't know exactly how they do it, but they don't, you know, they don't want party houses, they don't want, you know, all that stuff, so that's gone a long way. And then I think just the, the publicity that has occurred just within the city about short-term rentals and how we're enforcing and everything, I think has, has, has gone a long way as well. We have not received one complaint from a property that has a permit. Since they've got their permits, we have not received one complaint about any of those properties, no noise complaints, no trash complaints, no parking complaints, nothing. Nothing. So I think it's the effort of, 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 uh. Educating the property owner as they go through the permitting process makes them realize what their responsibilities are, and. You would think they would know them without us telling them, but, you know, we, we, we really drive it home to them. And I think that has gone a long way, and they realize that, you know, if they have a violation or, or a couple of violations, that they could have their permit. You know, uh, pulled from them, um, and, and they don't want that to happen. So. You, you know, even the, the property management companies that have properties that they're managing, uh, that do not have permits. And, uh, you know, there's two, there's two or three of the larger property management companies in the area that do seasonal rentals and that, that kinda stuff. They're very aware of it, and they're trying to make their customers, A, get a permit where applicable, and B. At least don't do anything that's, you know, gonna draw attention to you. So, you know, there's been, there's been that awareness. So I think that that, uh, takes away some of the necessary, uh. Heavy-handedness maybe that we had implemented in the ordinance originally, and that I personally feel that we can back off a little bit. This is, this is something that's going to occur. It's, it's happening everywhere, but I mean, it's certainly going to occur in the future at a greater rate. But I don't know what's city council's gonna do with the proposal, you know, we're just starting to get going with them, and so we'll see what happens.
Okay.
So it looks like. With that being said, that. Districts will no longer exist, and the whole city will be opened up for a Airbnb. Anywhere and everywhere.
Uh, un- under the proposal as it stands right now, yes. I would expect that there will be some pushback on that, and, and we'll see where, where that takes us.
Drinking and driving is against the law, and yet we are inundated with people who lost their license. And still drive.
Yep.
And.
We, we, if we were to pull a permit, we could. We would certainly have to monitor.
And to that.
Will that monitoring be as much as the RV, it's still, after being told they couldn't park in the front yard? Park in the front yard?
Which, which one of the three? Which one of the three that comes to mind? You mean the one in the weirs where they're living in it?
The staffing, and I, I'm, I'm not trying to throw darts, but the staffing is not there to play. And the budget's not there to play guardian of all the.
Yeah, you know, I, I hear you, Mr. Chair, and, and it, it, it. It, it becomes a matter of priorities, and it becomes a matter of, of, uh. We'll, we'll leave it at that. I mean.
Yep.
Yep.
If, if the city council were to allow this more so, then that becomes more of a priority. If, if we do hire one of these companies that does monitoring, that, that. Makes our easy, that makes our, you know, our life that much easier, because they're gonna, they're gonna identify the properties, you know, ahead of time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the city council approved twenty thousand dollars. Towards the monitoring of short-term rentals. This was my understanding on a budget item. And I'm curious to know, if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong, but that was a number that was out there, because I remember. One of the city councillors telling me this, and I was saying, and, and I guess my question to you based on this, is this an enforcement issue? I mean, we just, are you guys just so overwhelmed that you cannot enforce this law?
Uh, so, they have not approved money for enforcement. We have talked about it, and that is the going rate.
Okay, oh, all right, all right, so.
Have not, they have not approved it yet. Enforcement is not really the issue. The issue is, we don't know who's doing it. From a standpoint of, like I said, there's, there's like two hundred or so properties out there that are doing short-term rentals. And they may only do it once a year or twice a year, but, you know, and some of them are doing it continuously, so, you know, it's, and everything in between. But we don't have, then it goes to a staffing issue of being able to.
Right.
Monitoring those websites and everything to find out who's doing, and then identifying. As you know, you, you go on those websites, they don't give you an address, you know, they don't tell you it's. One twenty-three Main Street, they just say Laconia, you know.
Yeah, well, and they do that for the privacy of the, you know, I.
But the, the companies that we're looking at to do monitoring, they, they use meta- metadata and other. Methods that are beyond my comprehension, but they are doing all kinds of, of data matching, and, and they. They can identify most properties that are doing short-term rentals and give us an address. From the standpoint of, they, they take a snapshot picture of the living room, and then when, and when they send them a violation letter, we say. Is this a picture of your living room?
That's my dog.
Yeah.
So, you know, those kinda things. So, it, it's, it's not a matter of enforcement, it's a matter of being aware to enforce.
Okay, and let's, um, this, I think may go to why you have made this recommendation. There's a financial component of this, too. And I've always been an advocate, almost like you are, and so we can't control short-term rentals, it's just unless we, we can't monitor them. However, we can monetize them. And, uh, well, my, and my, my theory on this has always been, the Bike Week approaches. You couldn't stop people. From coming to Laconia for Bike Week. So they monetized. The vendor permits by charging outrageous sum of money to the vendors who were willing to pay it. Putting that money in a special revenue account and using that account to benefit city things. Money goes occasionally to the police, goes to the fire department. Goes to the parks department, there's, it, there's an offset there because of the cost. That's my, my, my thing is that. What is, how many, how many short-term rentals do, we have eighty on the books?
Yes.
Okay, how much money do they, what are their annual fees that they pay to the city?
They pay two fifty for a two-year permit.
They pay two hundred and fifty dollars for a two-year permit. And that's very, that is what it is.
Right.
I just went to Boston, I rented a hotel room, I paid a fourteen point five percent tax to the city of Boston. To stay in that hotel room. That's what I'm talking about here. Is that if, if, you know, along with your proposal to remove the zoning board, and that's gonna be neither here nor there. Have you relooked the money? And, and how we can possibly, we talked about this at the master plan steering committee.
Currently, we can't impose a local tax.
Not a tax, it's a user fee.
We can't impose a local user fee. We, we can, we can ask the legislature to allow us to do that. Whether the legislature will or not. Uh, and obviously, it wouldn't be just us that would be asking. There's plenty of other tourist towns, you know. Hampton, Portsmouth, Sunapee, Conway, Lincoln, et cetera, et cetera, would all love to be able to. Assess a local fee or tax, or whatever you wanna call it, on hotel rooms, et cetera.
This is kind of my ten, my ten dollar a night thing. You know, if you're gonna do it, you pay the city ten bucks a night.
At the present time, we can't do it, and, and as, and as a matter of fact, right now, the, the legislature. May be going in an opposite direction. There is a bill being introduced that would mandate. That we allow short-term rentals everywhere without regulation, and who knows whether that'll pass or not, but.
Um, I, I, I don't.
Application fee, could it, does it? If you have to hire a outside firm. Would the application fee cover the administrative cost of all of that?
Yes. That's our projection, that's our projection, yeah. If we got another. We got another hundred permits. Which I think would be.
Because the taxpayer shouldn't have to suffer on both sides.
You would cover the cost of, of an outside vendor to do this for us, yeah.
And, and right now, that price is approximately twenty thousand dollars a year, and we.
It depends on which service we take and, and what aspects of their services, you know, they, they'll.
Right, yeah.
Send out the notifications on their own if they want, or we can send them out, and, you know, so we gotta do a, you know, we gotta do. You know, cost things out to, is it cheaper for us to send out the notice than it would be for them, or, you know, we'll have to look at that.
Okay, and. Well, going along with your thoughts, Steve, if somebody, you said that the people that have. The application fee in, there are no complaints, they're good, you know, that's working well. But it's those people that are not filling out the application fee who are doing it dishonestly. There's, and if they're caught, is there not a fine?
Yes, they're, they're. It's, it's complicated. The, the short answer is yes, the long answer is it's very hard to. Get the fine applied.
Why?
We have to go to court to get the, the fine applied. But when we get a complaint about a property that is not permitted, and that's the only complaints that we're getting at the moment. Then, you know, we send out the letter and say, you, you need a permit, and for the most part, they come in and get their permit, and, and they always plead. You know, ignorance. And, oh, we didn't know, you know, but.
No, I, I'm just thinking, you know, how can you cover the cost of monitoring? If you, if, why couldn't you use the penalty phase of things to, to, um. But if you go to court, then that ends up being problematic as well.
Along with Gail's idea about trying to, you know, do some type of a local fee, it would be great to change, changes so that we could. Assess the, the, the penalty fees directly as well. That would be very, that would be more impactful and, and more meaningful, but. That's not the case.
Have we, um, okay, I. And how many, oh, I know what I wanted to ask you. How many applications in the two years since this op- since this. Particular, um, ordinance passed, or two, three, two or three years now?
Two years.
How many applications have we processed?
Processed?
All right, well, how many, do you know how many have come in front of the zoning?
Have anybody ever been rejected? Is that the bottom line?
Well, unless.
Cause if we got eighty.
We have, we have eighty that's been approved. I would say, um, there's probably been five or six. For one reason or another that didn't go through, I believe, you, well, you've denied at least one, but I believe. Uh, I think there was one other that was denied for some reason, I don't remember the reason. But anyway. Uh, there's, there's, there's some that just, they don't complete the process for whatever reason, you know, but it's not a lot. For the, for the people who come in and apply. For the most part, you know, one way or another, they're getting approved. They're either coming here, or they're, or they, or they, if they're in the CR district, then, you know. We can do it administratively, but. You know, there, there are some that come in and ask about it and, and just go away, but.
We've had a couple withdraw because they would, they recognized the fact they had to come to the zoning board for a special exception, so they withdrew before they got.
Well, and that's, and that's, well, and that's been, that was an issue with accessory dwelling units as well, is the fact that sometimes people process. They, they're just the, the process. This is what government is. I mean, sometimes it's restrictive in its processes and it's overwhelming. But you're saying, from what I understand then, other than the ones that we have processed in the last two years through this board, eighty.
Eighty to ninety.
Eighty to ninety short-term rental applications, and all of them, with the exception of a couple.
Right.
Have been approved.
Right.
And that the reason. That, that the department, the planning department has decided it wants administrative control over this. Is because, do you believe this is going to increase compliance? I mean, Karen just said.
Yes.
At a public meeting, that she's had one or two who have backed off, that's one or two out of eighty. At the same time, by, by doing this, you've, you're, you're removing Steve's point. That the neighbors. Have no longer any input into this.
I, I suspect that we will still maintain a, a. And a notification of abutters, just as we are now.
All right, and where do those abutters go in the rule-making authority, should this pass? Where do those abutters go if they object to this?
They would come to the office and, and, and state their opinion. The, uh, just as we're, we're proposing to do with the ADUs. I would suspect that we will follow essentially the same thing.
ADUs are different.
Yes, they are.
In total character and every aspect than from a.
Yep. I, I'm talking process, though.
Yes. Yeah, we're, we're, just talking.
Even with the process, the, as. The. It's like, like what you said, cause I read those documents you sent me, and thank you, of what y'all were proposing on those. And it made sense. It's a garage, it's something, it is long as it fell within everything like that. I don't think there's ever been one denied by the board. In that section. It has no adverse effect.
Right.
To the character of a neighborhood, okay? So, people having to go and voice their opinion against it. Is dramatically smaller than one that's gonna change, probably, has the possibility. Of changing the character of a neighborhood. From not being allowed to. All of a sudden.
Right, and I, and I, I suspect that that will be part of the discussion with the city council, when they, when they get to that point.
Mr. Chair, then I'd like to make a recommendation, that in this proposal that you do, and I'll go to the city council, I have no problem with the city council. We go in front of them to get appointed, we might as well go in front to complain, um, or not. In general, I have a great faith in the administrative processes of the city of Laconia. I think with the short staff that you guys do have, and I do believe, and I've said this at many public meetings, and you know my feelings on this, Dean. We have always been short-staffed in our planning department. For the size of the city, for the growth that we manage, especially now with the volume of the projects that have to get managed. Through the planning department, for the staff of, what do you got, six?
Seven.
Seven? You could easily use two more employees, if not one and a half, but the city council is determined that that's not gonna happen. Although, I don't know why it can't be in a budget request, to let them say, no, I never see any budgets come forward. From administration that ask for additional employees. Is this gonna make, I, I, I. I think what I'm saying is, is if there's gonna be, also, if there's gonna be a notification process. In those rules. I personally would like to see that if there is a complaint voiced to the administration, to the planning department. Through any method. And this is an honor system, maybe it should be writing, email, anything like that, that that triggers a review by the zoning board. I, I, I'm, I'm recommending that to give this char- neighborhood characteristic for potential alteration. Kind of, kind of like an overflow valve.
Certainly, if there.
You know, that if.
Certainly, if there is an official appeal, then that, then it would go to, to the, to the zoning board. Sometimes people come in and, and they ask a question. They think they have an objection, and when they, but because they don't completely understand the issue or completely. Understand what's going on, so they come in and they're, we had one just today, you know. It was on the one thirty-three Leighton Avenue. They were like, oh my god, this is right next door to us, and you know, what was it gonna do? And then when we explained to them what they were doing, they went, oh, okay.
Okay, never mind. Yeah, right.
You know, so, um.
Yeah.
You know, and we get this now, uh, when we approve short-term lodging permit, we, we send a notice to the abutters, and. And it seems like on every one of them, at least one of the neighbors will either call the office and say, I don't understand why I'm getting this notice. I don't live at this address, or they come into the office and ask the question, because they just. And then when we explain to them what it is, they go, oh, okay.
Okay.
And, well, and that's, that's just, I, what I'd like to see you do, if this should pass the city council, and again, I don't know, I, I, I don't know what's gonna happen. You know, that in this particular instance, because we are potentially administratively altering the character of a neighborhood. That there be some sort of a relief valve.
Yeah.
That, that directs people to the zoning board. Now, that could be an email. It doesn't, I, I don't wanna, you know, once again, you're. It doesn't, I, I don't wanna pe- you know, once again, you're, 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 you know, we have a situation where people are intimidated when coming in front of a board. Well, people can also be intimidated by the fact that you tell them on the phone that, well, I understand your, your problems, sir, but you have to file a formal complaint. Well, if someone doesn't know, if you were to tell my mother as a homeowner for the last sixty years what a formal complaint was, she'd be really overwhelmed by that. We do a lot of things automatically that most people don't understand. And they're gonna get this notification and they're gonna call you guys with questions. And I, I, I have to trust that the planning department is going to properly craft its rulemaking authority. That there is some sort of a relief valve to this that directs things to the zoning board. Because we are potentially altering the character of a neighborhood administratively. And at this point in time, I don't even know if that's legal. And that, I, I, you know, what you, what you don't wanna see is, is, is internal boards suing each other because I have actually covered some of those cases and, and that's, that's been ugly at all levels. Um, I also would ask that the minutes of this discussion be more fleshed out. I don't wanna read minutes that say, we had a discussion about short-term rentals. I'd, I'd like to ask that more of our concerns are included in the official record, that that record also be forwarded to the city council. So they can understand that the zoning board has discussed this publicly.
Well, when it gets to that point, there's always one more, the board can make a recommendation by writing and send that to the city council and all the mayor and all the city councillors.
And, oh, yeah.
On what the board feels and believes in so that.
And we can publicly, we have to do that publicly.
You can, well, by writing a letter, it's entered into their public records.
No, but I'm saying if it's gonna go out under the zoning board's signature, we have to, it has to be done and, we have to.
That's why I was saying, we as a board can vote on.
Right, yeah, okay, on the language of the letter.
The letter, the language of the letter, what goes in it, and everybody approves it and then it can be sent off.
Okay.
That is a, another tool in the toolbox.
Yeah, it is, and I, I said, and I, I have a feeling that at some, at some point, Dean's point is well taken, that there's legislation in the state, just so people understand, in two thousand seventeen, the Idaho State Legislature passed the law prohibiting all communities from regulating short-term rentals. Only cities. And we, our city, there are certain rules that, there are certain laws that apply to cities, there are certain laws that apply to towns because they're constructed differently. There is a town of Ketchum, Idaho, which is in the Sun Valley Ketchment area. And the minute, over the last two years with the short-term rental market and other economic factors that wing into this, the mayor has actually proposed a tent city. Across this hall from city hall, because over the last two years, real estate investors have bought up all of the property in Sun Valley, they have evicted all of the tenants or, and or doubled and in some cases quadrupling their rents, we've seen that. I think we also have to look at this as this proposal moves forward and we think about this. And an economic standpoint for the people in the city already, I, I, you know, the average rental for a one-bedroom apartment in Sun Valley, Idaho is almost two thousand dollars a month. This tent city that they have proposed is for teachers, police officers, administrative assistants. These are people who can no longer afford to live in Ketchum, Idaho, because very large, nameless, faceless public corporations have come in, bought up all the rental property, put it on the short-term rental market to take advantage of the tourism industry and have basically made it impossible for regular, normal people to live in that city. And I'm not talking people who are working three minimum wage jobs, I'm talking people who are making very good incomes that we consider are professional class. I've seen the space structure in the city of Laconia, I'd be willing to bet half of the people in the city of Laconia couldn't afford to stay in Laconia if, if, if this were to become the case in, in the city. So there should be some economic impact statements done before the city council makes its recommendation and include it in, in my concern anyway, if not the whole board's concern, that we also have to keep an eye on the short-term rental market and try and make Laconia and continue to keep Laconia the livable city that we've always known it to be. None of us wants to get priced out of our homes. And, and that's all I'm gonna say, Mr. Chair.
So any other business before the board? If there's none, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor?
All right, good night.
Oh, you also proposed putting performance zoning into the Weers, right? Along the Tiff district?